Welcome to a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at 9:30 at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Elyria. These are public meetings and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.loraincounty.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners page, then click on View Agenda.
Good morning, everyone. If you'll please rise for the Fledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everyone. This is Lorraine County Board of Commissioners meeting for Wednesday, August 14th of 2019. And our inspirational word for the day, "Fire goes out for lack of fuel and tensions disappear when gossip stops." And we have our dog this morning.
Good morning. This is kennel number 34, female. She is available on Saturday, the 17th. She came from the city of Lorraine. And this is what a real pit looks like, short, stocky. Very nice girl, though. But she is available and we have 22 other dogs in the kennel. Thanks.
Hopefully, we got a good picture of her because we can't see her face.
Yeah.
Hopefully, hey, I'll get her.
You got it.
Okay. She does have a little face.
Well, good morning, everyone. We understand we have a public presentation this morning concerning a project along Lake Avenue. So we'll welcome Don Romancik, our Community Development Director, to the board. Good morning.
Good morning, board, and thank you for this opportunity. With me is Matt Arnold, our Stormwater Technician with the Lorraine County Stormwater Management District. And today is, brings me great pleasure to be able to bring to you the final report for our Lake Avenue Stream Restoration and be able to kind of go over, this is a project that we have been working on for quite some time. And if Mr. Cortez could please switch over, we'll be able to show some nice pictures of the project before and after. Okay. So, again, we're here to talk about the Lake Avenue Wetland Restoration. This is, actually sits on the Clinton Avenue ditch. This is a project that began several years ago and with the acquisition of property from Our Lady of the Wayside. This project is approximately 18 acres. It was 206 parcels that we ended up acquiring. Primarily, it was an old subdivision that was never developed, could not be developed, lack of sewer, a lot of, just, or a lot of land conditions that would prevent it from going. Additionally, the area had been logged prior to us taking over and that created some issues that are identified in this presentation as red flags. We continued, again, with the logging. This is kind of what the site looked like when we acquired it. It was a mess. Originally, we had thought that we'd be able to do something straightforward, simple, stormwater detention basin, or like I like to call it a hole in the ground, real simple. Water comes in, it'll stay there, we would let it out slowly. If we go forward, the, again, it was a difficult site to be able to go through. We had over 1,900 lineal feet of ditch. It had been a very limited ditch. It conveyed water and did nothing else. So it wasn't very active and it just would move water to, through Elyria Township into Sheffield Township where it would create flooding. So what we were able to do is to basically relook at the site and rather than put a hole in the ground or a detention basin, to address wetland concerns, we went from that hole in the ground to a wetland restoration. Now, well, on the surface, that would look to be a much more expensive project. If we would've gone the way we had proposed, originally thought it out and been bullheaded, we would've had to go over a year of just permitting activity, working with the Army Corps, working with Ohio EPA. We would've also had to have spent hundreds and thousands of dollars on wetland mitigation. So instead, we partnered with Coldwater Consulting. We took a look at doing something a little more innovative and what we did was come up with a stream restoration plan. Next slide. Again, these are some of the challenges that we were looking at. So it was estimated would've been 1.4 million. Our project costs, all combined, including working with Coldwater, working with our agencies, was a little more than 800,000. So we actually brought our design, our construction, in for less than what the permitting would have been. This picture I really like is actually from the site. Begins to show you how we turned a ditch into what looks much more like a stream. We got a nationwide permit. We were able to turn that around in 60 days, rather than a year plus, and it cost us nothing in mitigation. Here's an aerial that was taken with a drone. To give you an idea, if you remember what the site looked like before with the aerial.
Flip it back.
Can you take it back to the, oh, yeah. One more.
That's incredible.
Thank you. Go ahead.
So, you know, you can see now how the stream actually meanders through. It actually, those areas that are outside of kind of that outline, that yellow, there are, it goes into flood plain. So we are now maximizing the use of that land for flood control, as well as it's providing us with a huge water quality benefit. That water, when it goes into those basins, is dropping its sediment, it's dropping heavy metals, it's dropping the nutrients. And then the plants that have been put in there, as well as the trees that we were able to save by not having to take down, are there, holding the soils in place and then taking those nutrients up so that we're protecting our water resources.
That's awesome.
I always thought I was impressed with what I saw next to the Board of Elections until I saw that. That's amazing.
You know what? Once I got the final report and I looked at the pictures of that, we gotta do a presentation on this.
Yes.
Because you cannot see this from the road.
No, you can't. Very nice.
Can't believe it's the same area.
Yeah.
That's awesome.
It has been a long road to get here, but it has been worth the wait. The design, the design is incredible. Again, not only did we take a site that was ugly and it wasn't productive and it wasn't serving any need and we've turned it into a real asset. Those six wetland basins have the capability of holding, I like acre feet because I know how big an acre is. We can hold back 13.6 acre feet. So imagine 13-plus acres of land covered by a foot of water. That's what we're able to hold back in this. It actually functions, the heavier the rains, the better this functions. This was designed to hold back, we almost hold back 100% of the 100-year rain.
Nice.
We don't begin to really even do anything until the five-year rain goes. So this is when, this actually works when we need it most. It's not going to hold back water, it's not going to waste capacity on the little rain. What it's going to do, it's going to activate on those big rains, those that can cause flooding downstream. For others, it's 4.5 million gallons. That number is just too big. I get an E in my head when I try and calculate what that is. And then, if we go to the next. So also, what made this really a great opportunity for the county was, again, how much money we saved versus doing a traditional project. We were able to get buy-in from the state of Ohio through the 319 grant. So they assisted us with a $295,000 grant and that actually comes through the Clean Water Act in the US EPA as well. So we've had great partnerships with our federal and state to do this. We are continuing to protect our water. We were, we've gotten great newspaper coverage, as well as from regionally, our vibrant Northeast Ohio group as well had highlighted it. So this is a project that's gotten a little bit of notoriety in the good sense across the region. And also, the beauty of these is nature takes care of itself, so the amount of maintenance that we're going to have to put into this is very minimal. We need to check our outlet structures once in a while, probably a couple of times a year, and then if needed, to make sure that those outlet structures stay clear in the inlet structure so the water can come in and then leave as it's designed to do. So versus basins that need regular mowing, here, we let nature take care of itself. So it's always good to be able to take advantage of what nature does best and that's continue. So again, we've already touched on some of the highlights. If you notice the picture of the turtle, that was from onsite. That's actually Matt Arnold's screensaver. He took the photo while he was out inspecting the site.
That's cool.
And again, we've begun to see the wildlife already begin to take hold in there and this is a very immature site, so it's going to continue to improve. I don't know if we're able to, we did get a little video of us actually releasing the water because we had to build the new stream channel and then, well, the water used the old. I don't know if that will play or not. Well, believe it or not, the water runs down the stream.
That's exciting.
Next. So, and then, again, if you have any questions, or for the public as well, Matt and I are able to answer. We do have Chip Went here, so if you want to get into the nitty-gritty on the type of plants and some of the other things going on. Also, what we have been doing with Matt as he's out in the field is we've got him taking some water quality samples, just to kind of test that it's working the way we think it will. It'll probably be a year or two before we actually get what I would consider good, solid data. We're still immature, we still have exposed soil. It's going to take a little bit of time for nature to reclaim its own.
Does this not tie in with the project that's next to the Board of Elections?
It is. It's the exact same ditch, so this activates and this is kind of our first line of defense. And then we have the traditional stormwater basin next to the Board of Elections, exact same ditch, and then it's also holding back an additional 3.6 acre feet. It's a smaller.
Did you do that as well? That's impressive.
Well, you'll have that, if you remember right, we were supposed to be able to do more capacity here. And what Don showed you, when we bought the land originally, we weren't informed that the land had been logged. And we purchased it in the middle of the winter and it was one of the worst winters that we have experienced and we weren't able to get back there. And it was supposed to be completely wooded land. When we went back there during the thaw, we found out, discovered that it had been logged, which actually wouldn't have presented a problem to us, excepting that when they logged it, they didn't restore it. And by the time the site began to dry out and it turned into a wetland, because they didn't restore it correctly.
Right. I learned a new term, mosaic wetland. There were so many little wetlands that rather than actually going out and drawing each tire track that became a wetland and each rut that became a wetland, Army Corps has a term and they just, 80%, any 80% of the area that you would look at, they would consider wetland.
So, now, I mean, there was things we may have been able to do if we had time to wait, to kind of try to let the site restore itself over a few years, but we didn't have time. So we went back to the property owner, renegotiated the price of the property because at that point, the property value had changed because they logged it out and it didn't have the same value to us. And I will give them credit, they did work with us on the pricing of the property and repriced it accordingly. And then we were able to shift the Stream Restoration, to Extreme Restoration Grant, which actually reduced our overall cost of the project that we were going to invest initially, correct?
Yeah. So we ended up with, on the construction side, just over $380,000. And that would've been a basin that would've been about five times the size of the one that is on the property next to the Board of Elections. And that one cost us about $340,000. Just to give you an idea of how this ended up actually coming in, now, we didn't get as much of our stormwater detention as we had originally imagined, but with some innovative design, I think we got more effective.
We did. And I was always concerned about the, how big the retention was going to be in the back, because it was going to be retention and then detention and then, excuse me, retention then a slight amount of, I might get them back. And then we're going to do detention and we're going to do a little bit of retention because we're going to slowly trickle it off. But I was always concerned about how much water was going to be back there and then how to not have problems back there. As it is, we're having some problems right now with recreational people running through the site back there.
They TV's?
We, yes. We've posted and we've put some barriers across.
We're posting signs, we've moved some stone and we've probably got some more stone that will be on the place.
There's been, there's been a little bit of damage. We've been able to restore it, but we need to keep an eye on it. I don't think they really mean any intent, but the sites right now is in a very fragile condition and we need to keep people out of there. In addition to that, we've also been able to get some leverage. We purchased a very dingy-looking facility right on Lake and Elyria Avenue there that's been an eyesore for the last 30 years. So we're cleaning that area there. Our intentions is to probably make a gateway-type thing, put something up, put a signage up in that area, demonstrating the project, maybe come up with a before and after pictures on a board and.
Yeah, we've already got one small sign that's up that kind of notifies.
Yeah, you know me, Don. That ain't gonna last.
I know.
But did you get with the Port Authority to have the crews go out there and start that work?
Yeah, they've actually removed some of the, well, the boat is basically ready to move. Deputy Lopez should be getting it out. The Port Authority was able to remove the trash and everything to get that boat available. We got a little bit of cleanup left according to what Pat had told me and we'll be back, they'll be back out there to finish.
Yeah, we, you know, I want to push that brush back quite a bit, you know, and get the brushhogs in there and move it back. You know, I can disappear that boat pretty easy, so we have that capability, so we can't figure it out, just let me know, but.
It'll be out shortly.
And are we gonna, we gonna, we gonna brush hog along the easement with the railroad track there, too?
Right now, that's pretty open. So it's clear, the railroad isn't a huge fan of not being able to access. They monitor that quite a bit, just because they've had some issues in the past. Actually, it was at the same time the logging took place.
It was the drainage, drainage through there. Yeah, but I want to talk about how we're going to gateway that front, will you? And of course, the Board of Elections project next to Board of Elections, you were kind of impressed with how that's working. That's coming, that should be done.
It is basically complete now. We are waiting for the grass to come in and whatnot. Maybe, Matt, you can just kind of touch on that real quick since you were just out there?
Yeah, they, they just, so with the wet conditions, the grasses in the bottom of the basin are not coming in quite, so they're going to wait for a little bit drier time to be able to get the right types of grass, a different type of grass that grows there to grow in the water more. But with all the water keep flushing it out, it's not taking.
Did they, I haven't been out there since it was still a mud dig. Have they, did they put a concrete sluice in the bottom or is it all just a grass?
There is a channel.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about, a channel.
Yeah, and it's rock-lined through the middle of that. And that kind of conveys the water, except during storm events, then it kind of floods out.
Right, it comes up onto the grass here, but there is a, there's a hard surface bottom. So they made that permeable rather than just a concrete surface?
It is permeable. It's like larger, like three to four inches in size rocks. Yeah, boulders.
Can we talk more about, because, you know, taxpayers want to know what this means for homeowners. I mean, it's great to see a project like this, but I mean, the whole idea was that, you know, you have a bad rain and you go anywhere near the, you know, Sheffield Township Fire Department and that whole area's flooded out, going down Clinton and everything else. And so I guess I'm wanting us to really focus a little bit more on how this is helping homeowners.
The impetus for this project really was, as Commissioner Lundt pointed out, is the consistent, heavy flooding that was occurring on Clinton Avenue, especially near the Sheffield Town Hall. Both homeowners, as well as the township itself, were being flooded out on a regular basis. And the floods were so bad that at one point in time, Sheffield Township actually lost their fire command vehicle. So these floodwaters, they wasn't leaving its bank and people having wet backyards. This was water several feet high, many feet away from the ditch and actually getting to the point where it was flooding out an engine of SUV and basements being flooded. Since this, these projects weren't even completed, early, late spring, early summer, I'd say early June, we had a extremely heavy rain event that occurred kind of the middle of the county and to about Northridge Road. And I think we got about three inches of rain in about a three-hour period. I got a phone call from one of the residents that had been flooding on a regular basis on the Clinton Avenue ditch, right near the Sheffield Township Hall. And all he could do was say, "Thank you, we can't believe the water never left the banks." We were still under construction on the detention basin by the hall and we still were doing some fine tuning at that stream restoration project. I just got that phone call again yesterday from the same homeowner, again, thanking the board for their commitment to do this and to do what it took to be able to get it, so.
And we, we have a phase three to this, too. We're also hopeful, while the city of Lorraine didn't participate in the agreement, you know, some of the facts are we're pushing more and more water through these ditches as we create more impermeable surface out in the unincorporated area. It's going to head to the lake. So we're hopeful that the 28th Street ditch is taking water at a slower pace. It's not going to, we're not going to change the volume of the water, we're going to change the timing of how the intensity of the water going through. Clinton Avenue has gotten worse and worse and worse over the years and the 28th Street ditches have been taking volumes quicker than it used to. So we're hopeful for some improvement all down through that area from our project. But the third phase of the project's going to happen in Sheffield Township. Now, I don't know when that's going to occur. It's not completely necessary right now, but we're slowly but surely gaining paper lots in that area. Some people have been cooperative. They have these useless swampy paper lots. We've been picking them up as we've been able to get reasonable landowners to sell them at a very reasonable price because they're never going to be developed. There's a few people that think they're sitting on a mountain of gold because we're back there buying up some swampland. It's all suddenly turned into beachfront property according to them. But, but, you know, we'll just wait that out because we really don't need the third phase. But a third phase would be great to alleviate, in the future, more water pushing in volume towards the city of Lorraine. It's not completely fair that as we build out in the unincorporated area and we flow higher volumes at peak times, that we suffer the city completely by themselves as good partners with everybody in our community. So we're looking at that. And for those people that may be listening that got some of those swamplands out there, we'll just wait you out.
Yeah. Well, as I've said before, I was in that area one day during a heavy rain event and just barely got my car out. People don't realize how bad that situation was down there.
Were you by St. Lads that time? Was that the one I was saying?
I was, I was just across the street from the Board of Elections at a meeting and everybody said, "You gotta move your cars immediately, the parking lot's flooding and the street's flooding." And it was up to my car door, didn't quite get in my car, but thank goodness, got out of there in enough time. But it's, and I know, talking to leaders in Sheffield Township there about how bad it was for their emergency facility and their, and their town hall there. It's just great to hear the news from the neighbors saying that they're seeing the impact and they're going to see even greater impact. That's why these projects are so important and this board has really taken stormwater responsibility so seriously to address these issues. And, you know, obviously, the stormwater fees help out with these things, but this is a wise investment of the money and we're seeing the results and proof of performance. And I'm just blown away by the pictures, just blown away. I can't believe that's the same site.
Well, it's also, we always talk about leverage. It's bringing back project money, federal project monies to match the local monies. These are the kind of projects, this is, this was with the Clinton Avenue piece, we were able to use leftover money from the stream restoration, correct? We, there was some additional dollars left over?
Well, it freed up dollars in stormwater to put towards Clinton, in this case.
So this was our third restoration project?
This is our third, this one stood alone. What we were able to do is on our cost savings on Willow Creek and Eaton Township, we were able to transfer money over to Margaret Peak and do Fortune.
That's the one, okay, all right. So, you know, continue to look for these projects that we can do to bring federal dollars, EPA dollars, grant dollars, so we don't have to do them all local dollars, we just got to find these projects. And the access road's still in the back. You want to explain what the top over is so folks don't think we put a dam back there?
Ah, okay. They're, going back to the Clinton Avenue Detention Basin next to the Board of Elections, there had been an, there had been and is an easement that allowed for access, actually not, well, people used it for Gargus Hall and for the properties in the back. It actually belongs to the houses a little further across in the Roland property. So as we're designing this detention basin, one of the things that you need to accommodate for is that rain that comes, it's just too big to hold back and it's going to top over. And you have to design essentially, it's an emergency spillway, so that the water is, while you're holding back what you can, you're allowing the water to release into the ditch and continue to move on, rather than holding it back as a dam and spreading it out. Our big concern was public safety. This is a path people have taken for, since I've been around. So, and on a rain event. On a rain event, we had some real concerns, what's going to happen if this is topping over and people are attempting to cross. So we actually worked with not only KEM, but our Stormwater Advisory Council and had several discussions on what to do. So we've actually worked with making sure we had appropriate signage to warn people that this is not to be crossed if you see water topping it over. And we've looked at a couple of different fencing options, believe we're, we went with the guard rail. So we went with a guard rail to catch a car if someone were misreading the sign or decided to ignore it. We're going to try and protect them from being swept over and into the ditch and creating a bigger problem for both themselves and us. But that was something that took us the better part of a month to figure out the best approach we could have to be able to protect health and allow this to function. And again, we used specific stone to allow the water to go and to hold it in place. So we're maintaining an easement that we had to and again, continuing to make sure this basin works while protecting human health as well and public safety.
I was just curious, any professional thoughts from Coldwater on the project and having worked on others in the past? And if you want to come up to the podium, just, I know you work on a lot of these and you've seen a lot of projects, so I'm wondering if there's some unique features to this or benefits, great benefits that you see from it?
Right. And I think Don laid that out really well, but, you know, when looking at the three projects that the county's undertaken, Lake Avenue certainly has the greatest impact. And myself personally, I live in Huntington Township, right? So to see adaptive management of stormwater with ecological restoration is incredibly valuable. We've already discussed the value to the taxpayers, the high intrinsic value of ecological restoration, and it even supports, you know, Lorraine is having the greatest sport fishing season in a generation, right? Walleye are extremely prevalent in the lake right now. Any projects that are in this realm of restoration, support that. So high intrinsic value, a direct benefit to stormwater quantity and quality, really, I can't say enough good things about it. And eventually, when there can be some more access out there where people can enjoy, can and see, can see and learn about these. And this, yeah, this site is unique in the fact that we had 2,000 feet of ditch to play with. Other, smaller projects like Fortune Ditch and. Other smaller projects like Fortune Ditch and Willow Creek, those are our literal and metaphorical drops in the bucket. Lake Avenue, you were able to get a quantifiable benefit. So I think from that perspective, you know, as a citizen and of course, working for Coldwater, making those wise investments in adaptive management, that's, that's something we do want, want the board to, you know, to keep looking at. Lorain County is blessed and cursed with a lot of water. How can we management, manage it? There's certainly other opportunities to do similar type projects. Basins are effective. I think ecological restoration hits on a couple of different items that, you know, I, I think are a benefit to anyone here.
The ditch, the way you had it meandering, did, was any of that natural or did we force that to slow the water down?
We, so we did force that too, right? That ditch pre-construction was a right angle, straight, very linear. Now, we have models and we have literature that tells us streams meander like that somewhat naturally. You know, I'm talking the radius, how far apart those curves are. Those are all things that are documented through science, through literature, through previous projects. So yes, that allows that stream to function more naturally. That slows the water down, allows it to spread and of course is a habitat benefit too. Having the six basins in line, especially leaving some of that existing vegetation, right? It, it was a, it was a decent quality wetland pre-construction, right? It, it wasn't the bottom of the barrel, it wasn't super high quality. We were able to enhance that now. The diversity out there is insane. As the trees mature, they suck up stormwater as well. So when we're talking about the quantity of stormwater that's held back in these physical wetlands themselves, that doesn't even account for the amount of uptake from vegetation, right?
Are we going to be adding some sticks out there?
Say again?
We're going to be putting some trees in out there?
There are, they planted a couple hundred out there. The fortunate part about that site is it's wooded all around it. There's tons of volunteer vegetation coming up as well, which is different from a site like Fortune Ditch out on Margaret Peak. You have to plant every single piece out there. Here, a lot of that's already coming up on its own.
They, and then meandering stops a lot of the channeling that takes place, right?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
And those meanders are, like I say, they're designed to have a specific radius of curvature is what they call it. Where the amount of erosion equals the amount of deposition, right? Which is a natural function in a stream. We also added rock in certain places where our models and our engineers told us, you're going to have higher velocity of water here. That's where we employ rock, additional plantings and bioengineering as they call it to resist that erosion, protect the investment.
Can I ask you about the, the permeable rock at the bottom of, behind the Board of Elections there? How do we handle weed control in that, in that rock? You know, a, a lot of times they see the basins, they use a solid surface at the bottom of the basin. So you can mow the, you can mow the sides or keep the, keep the grass under control. How, how do you control weed control coming up through the permeable surface in the center when you've got a heavy coarse rock and you can't?
Right, right. Probably in that scenario, and mind you, I haven't been by the basin. I haven't really seen that rock in the bottom. Herbicide application sometimes is warranted and, and that would probably be a scenario where.
Yeah, I'd be out there with the signs, you know, I mean, that goes against what we're doing.
Sure, sure, sure. Short of getting down there with a weed whacker, I guess. But, you know, one of the things to consider, and I'm not sure the plants that, that have been planted down there, but you can find those that are shorter, right? That are low or no, no mow type species.
Yeah, I just, I just, I was just wondering about that. You know, a lot of times I've seen these.
Right.
And what they do is they, they use a solid bottom, not wide, but a solid bottom that dries out and when, when the conditions are right. And then you can, you can, you can keep the, the green matter. It's not, I call it grass, but it's, you know. You can keep that low enough that it, it doesn't look like it's overrun and then impede any, any flow through. That's why I was asking about what we had at the bottom of the channel there. I'm just wondering about maintenance on that. So we get stuff growing up through all that, that coarse, that coarse rock down there. Something just to, we need to think and we need to talk through that because I don't want that area to look overrun.
Right, right.
Okay, just, we'll, we'll talk.
Very good, and I'm excited for, I'm sure those property owners, you know, that's a restoration of their values. The, just the sheer impetus of all that water always coming through a property. That's, that's very traumatic for homeowners. So that's a big plus.
And, and also let me, let me say that we worked with the property owner. We got this property, was in a, it was in a tax hangup. Worked with the Port Authority, the Land Bank, Community Development, consultants, you know, putting this all together. And so we're using all the resources available, Lorain County and all the partnerships available to get that project by the Board of Elections done. And then I want to thank All Lady of the Wayside who worked with us on the property purchase. They weren't, they weren't too demanding on the price of the property. And we were able to get the property from them and find it there. Have been sitting with them for a long period of time. So a lot of partnerships going on that need to be recognized.
And I think to add on that, Jim, too, even from a federal and state level, right? A lot of attention is given to the Maumee and the Cuyahoga watersheds. Lorain County needs to say, hey, don't forget about us too. But even saying that there's still lots and lots of opportunities to make those partnerships to secure grant funding for, for strategies more like Lake Avenue.
Perfect. And it all started with Bill kicking over Beaver Dam. Remember that, Don?
Oh, yeah.
The, Bill.
Bill Holtzman?
Bill Holtzman went out there and we, we liked the joke because he went back there in Leary Township and cleared out a Beaver Dam because they were flooding in Leary Township in a little area. And a couple of days later, we had a big rain and it flooded out some areas in Sheffield Township. So they all got into a big argument and Holtzman caused, Holtzman caused the flooding. So we all, we were back in that area. This is when we started all working in earnest back there to solve some problems.
This has started, how many years ago? This has been what, five, six years?
Well, Holtzman's been retired for.
He's been retired for about four. We probably started on this, yeah, four and a half, five years ago on the stream restoration. And this came to our knowledge. It's something we wanted to address probably a year or so before that.
Well, cobbling all the resources together.
Right.
Land purchases, grant monies, design work, then the actual construction work and it takes time.
If I may kind of plug one ad for the board. October 12th, we're going to be doing that tree planting out at Margaret Peak. And you'll get to also see in person then the stream restoration that was done there at Fort, Fortune Ditch. And see the restoration, or participate in the restoration of 50 acres of oak savanna as well as see one of the premier birding sites within the entire state of Ohio that's in Lorain County. So this is again, another opportunity to, to see how their stormwater funds with our Great Lakes Restoration Initiative funds. And a lot of the partnerships that we've had with the Park Board, Eaton Township, the federal and state governments, a Black River Advisory Committee.
We're involved and is that the day we're actually going to plant?
October 12th, yes.
Great. At first they thought they'd have to move that into November and they were a little concerned about weather. So I was happy to hear we could get that backed up to the October set date.
Hopefully it'll still be, mid-October can be interesting. It can be 80, it can be 20. I'm hoping for 80.
Yes. And what are we planting, like 200?
Uh, there's a total of 400 trees. We'll probably start a little bit early.
To boots on, we'll have to get our boots and the engineers off.
That's right. Well, Matt brought us our boots last time.
We'll be getting more information on the event for the public as well. And we hope to have a great turnout with, you know, because we'll, we'll need some volunteers. That's a lot of trees. But that was a very common type of environment in Lorain County along the Great Lakes. These oak savannas, kind of transitions between the forest and the meadow.
And Don, I understand they're working out arrangements on where volunteers are going to park, how they're going to move around and stuff.
Yeah, there's still a lot of logistics that we're finalizing. And that, that's why we're talking about it and it's still early August.
Great, great.
Get the trolley out there. I don't think it'll move.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thanks for your work.
Great job. Okay, Madam Clerk.
Under resolutions, we do not have investments, so appropriations?
So move.
Second? Discussion, Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Skouski?
Aye.
Swita?
Aye.
Transfers?
So move.
Second?
Discussion, Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Skouski?
Aye.
Swita?
Aye.
No advances, no repayments, requisitions?
So move.
Second?
Discussion, Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Skouski?
Aye.
Ms. Swita?
Aye.
Travel, um, yes, travel?
Yes, so move.
Second?
Discussion, Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Skouski?
Aye.
Ms. Swita?
Aye.
Bills?
So move.
Second?
Discussion, Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Skouski?
Aye.
Swita?
Aye.
Authorized various personnel actions as indicated on the summary sheet. Please, with the major sectionary county commissioners.
That would be County Administrator Jim Cordez, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioner, and it's been a fine morning already, hasn't it?
It has.
I do want to have an executive session with the board. I'm finishing up a purchase of real estate. It's done. I just want to go over the final details with you on that. The, I think probably we'll talk about that next week openly. The, also I have a few potential hires at the Collection Center and 911, maybe on the custodial crew that I wish to look at applications with the board on. Also ongoing labor negotiations with the order workers. We've been meeting. Want to talk about the steel workers and the contracts and the orders office and treasurer's office that remain uncompleted. One pending legal matter. And the sale of, two sales of real estate. So all those subjects allow one of the Sunshine Act for executive session discussions. So to ask at the conclusion of our regular board meeting, we go into executive session and we talk about those matters that I've outlined.
Just a few things, just a few things.
Couple things. After lunch, and we had a much better lunch last week, so.
Approved with the reading of the minutes of August 6th and 7th?
So move.
Second?
Discussion, Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Skouski?
Aye.
Swita?
Aye.
Under transit authorized various filings of applications with the Ohio Department of Transportation for fiscal year 2020. Transportation assistance grants may include the Ohio Elderly and Disabled Transit Fair Assistance Program and Urban Transit Program, Ohio Transit Preservation Partnership Program, and authorized County Administrator to execute on behalf of the board.
So move.
Second?
Discussion, Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Skouski?
Aye.
Swita?
Aye.
Submit federal grant applications with the FTA and other federal agencies for fiscal year 2020 transportation assistant grants under the Urban Formula Funding Program, Section 5307 of the Federal Transit Act as codified in under Section 5309 discretionary grants and authorized administrative action on behalf of the board.
So move.
Second?
Discussion, Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Skouski?
Aye.
Ms. Swita?
Aye.
Common please approve grant agreement in the amount of $210,008 with the Ohio Department of Rehab and Correction, Division of parole and Community Services, Bureau of Community Sanctions, no cash match required.
So move.
Second?
The, Commissioners, next week I will be, I've been working with the General Divisions of Court and Court Administrator and her staff with, as you know, the parole services and the cases that are coming over. And the grant I received last week was about 1.8 million. As they shift caseloads to the local communities, those that have adult probation departments, was more than we anticipated, so that's pleasant. I had some questions on the grant as I went through it. I spoke with them yesterday afternoon, nothing major. So I want to dock it that next week and we'll have somebody here to talk about that a little bit as we make the transmission. Ms. Klausa has some reason she can't be here that, but she'll have somebody here to talk. And we'll have a little bit of dialogue on that, but we need to get moving on that. There'll be quarterly payments from the grant. I'm satisfied that, that there's a good significant amount of resources that can be utilized. Had some question on whether we can pay some local expenses from that. They're verifying it, but the faster we move, the more we can, we can get this thing going. And we're working on the third floor of the courthouse right now. So we, we have a really good work experience going and I, I just don't want to linger in that. So I just want to prepare you that it's coming and we've reviewed all that. So I'm going to, I'm going to agenda that piece for adult probation next week with a presentation.
I guess the concern is how much, how, how long that money will last.
Commissioner, I always have, I always have a concern with, with regarding funding being provided. And when things, things are healthy, usually the state will honor a commitment made. But is, when the economy begins to sour a little bit, in the first place, they usually go is to their commitments to the local level. This is, this is another 1.8 million dollar commitment. It's very significant and if, if that begins to be reduced, at the same time, we see a reduction in our resources because the economy is turning the wrong way. We get, we get a double whammy, that's what happened to us. People didn't quite understand what.
Local government?
They didn't understand what was going on with us during the recession. We tried to explain that not only were we seeing a reduction in, in our resources, but we were seeing a reduction in the commitments that were made. So we were getting hit twice as hard while we were trying to get through all of that. We don't have a choice in this matter, that's the unfortunate thing. We're, 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 we're a product of the state legislature. And being a product of the state legislature doesn't give us many rights when they decide to do these things. People would think that we have the option to say no, or we have the option to fight back. We, we possess neither of those options. So we're going to do the best we can with this.
Yeah, and I just think it's important for people to know because there are people out there who believe or tell the community, we have this perpetual stream of money that, you know, when, when the state steps in to provide assistance, normally it's for a short term. So I'm concerned about if that's going to happen in this case. You know, we saw with the, the MCO tax, sales tax issue. And that was only backfilled for, for a couple of years. And so, you know, but when the state mandates it, we have no choice but to do it. Driving in this morning, I was hearing folks talking about recession a lot on the radio, which was troublesome based upon the very negative impact of the tariffs regarding the economy.
Well, the MCO tax, we, we should state that openly. Again, the MCO tax was a $2 million hit.
Yep.
Well.
The state didn't cause that.
And we're talking about a temporary funding mechanism on something that we're setting up that is established to be a long-term department. It's going to be a forever responsibility. So if funding evaporates, it now becomes a burden rather than something we've done to initiate usage of funds and just a transition of, of accounts. It becomes our problem then.
And I see on this one that we're approving today, there's no cash match required. So that's a good one.
Well, remember, when not only do we have the 1.8 million dollars now that this, this will, next week, and we'll talk more fully on that next week. I just wanted to prepare you a little bit for that. We also have the TCAP money that's there, that, that's another significant pool of money. I think it's in the 1.3 range. So, you know, you're talking about, you know, 2.1, 2.2 million dollars that, that if those commitments cease to exist or they're significantly reduced, will, will place the burden locally. That could be heavy.
Getting the courthouse ready for the additional staff that we're going to need is not going to be paid by the state, so that's going to come out of our own capital money.
Well, but it, that, well, actually there is some ability to.
Is there money for that?
We did the third floor ready, so I, I don't believe the costs.
We built it out, but we didn't like put actual offices in.
I, I don't think the costs are going to be significant. Again, our relationship has been fundamentally, I don't want to say fundamentally, it's been significantly improved the last couple of years. So we have workability to, to do things that, that are more efficient, productive. So I'm, I'm not as overly concerned as I would have been three, four years ago at how to get something done in a cooperative manner. The, and there is money for equipment and things like that. And they've been exploring that in the grant. And we did build out the third floor, but you know, recognizing we were, there has been grants for probation services and so forth through the state and these things, but there's been no recovery for housing and things like that. We put a lot of money into the courthouse to house them, whether we did the fifth floor, the courthouse or, or any other building. We, we're still paying all that locally to house people. You can pay for salaries, but what are you going to do with those people? They got to be put in a building somewhere. There's all kinds of infrastructure and things that, that don't, that don't get recovered for those cost of those services that have to be covered locally. And it's not the courts that are doing that to us. It's, it's the need for services that do that. So, and we're working through it, but it, it's, it's a good thing that you took a long look when we were doing the courthouse. I distinctly remember the day the engineering architects said that if you don't build out a new third floor, because there really wasn't a third floor, it was a balcony area in the back of the courthouse that was being kind of half-assed used as a third floor. And we don't extend that and do that now. You can't do it later without ripping out all the renovations you're doing because it is a very structural restrictions of the building. And you chose to spend a good deal of extra money then for what we thought we weren't going to use for several years.
Right, I know, we didn't think it was going to happen quite this fast.
Nice job, guys.
So it was a good look and you had to take a leap of faith. I was thinking it wasn't going to really be productive, well past. you know, five, six, maybe seven or eight, ten years. And here it is, just a handful of years, and it's already, and it may not, it may not be enough space as it is with the amount of people that are coming over.
Don't say that. Don't say that.
Well, but again, when you have people that want to reach an outcome and a collaboration and a cooperation, you usually find a solution. I've told you before.
Partners.
Good partners will always find an answer that works for everybody. When you're not finding answers, it's usually because somebody doesn't want to find an answer.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Skoski.
Aye.
Sveda.
Aye.
Under the engineer authorized disposable unneeded obsolete property in accordance with the ORC three oh seven twelve D, a rigid Coleman sewer jet running machine will be donated carlisle township.
So move.
I wouldn't give those people a call-out township anyway.
Aren't you lucky?
Oh, Bill's still here, isn't he?
Yeah, Bill's here.
Can you drive it home today?
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Skoski.
Aye.
Sveda.
Aye.
Sheriff apply for grant monies from FY nineteen Edward Bryan Memorial Justice Assistant Grant in the amount of thirty-two thousand four hundred and ten and spirit allocation for the county, city of Allee, Allee and Lorraine in each in the amount of ten thousand eight hundred and three dollars and thirty-four cents to purchase miscellaneous equipment and no local matches required.
So move.
Second discussion. Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Skoski.
Aye.
Sveda.
Aye.
Public comment?
Anyone wishing to address the board this morning? Sure, come on up and state your name. We have three minutes for public comment.
Teresa Shea, five nineteen East Avenue, Allee. I know you're getting tired of me, maybe not, but I always have something new to tell you. I am here again about buses and trains in Lorraine County. Not so easy to see the need for poor people and people like me. Besides, it's a sunny, beautiful day of summer. Now, I have met new people at State Senator Manning's public meeting. I met a late arrival to the meeting who represented many companies whose workforce will be retiring and they will need replacement employees. Their concern is the lack of transportation in Lorraine County. Some of her sentences are the same ones I use. She did not know I had already asked about monies for buses and trains. I said I was the only one. She sounded like me and yet was representing Fortune five-hundred companies. I swear the crowd was hooked in and glad she spoke too. New monies are being allocated, I'm sure you already know, by the state, but you must earmark their use because it's just for transportation in general. You know more about it than I do. But you must remember to expand our bus system and provide trains because you fulfill, because you fulfill needs of all, not just a few. Just a little thought you may not like, or you might. Your garage repair situation could be remedied by using the transportation center's parking and checking with Mayor Brenda about the use of the Washington Avenue parking lot. I'm not sure with six-hundred spaces. I don't count. But that is two accessible ideas. And I don't think the city of Allee uses that parking lot much. If you had a bus line in place that ran more than once every two hours, you wouldn't be having this issue. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any others wishing to make public comment this morning? Sheri?
Hi, Sheri Campbell, fifty-four zero one North Point Parkway, Lorraine, Ohio. I just want to thank the Board of Commissioners on behalf of the law, of the Lorraine Public Library. And basically, and honestly, the county of, honestly, the whole county of Lorraine, I think I can, I can't speak for a lot, all the residents, but I would think the majority are appreciative of the county, of the commissioners acknowledging Toni Morrison, that Toni Morrison, the impact that she's had on the community. And obviously, as you can see this last week, the world, there's so, so much press and so much attention. All of it, particularly, all of it very wonderful. I want to thank them for the acknowledgement of the, you know, for the proclamation. It's, like I said, it's just, it's just been, it's, it's been an honor to, you know, I've worked at the library for twenty-nine years. It's been, it's been an honor to work as, you know, as her, as a, you know, basically, she's our ex-employee. She's basically our ex-employee. And she's our, you know, she's just, she's, like I said, she is a gift seriously to the world. I just, there's, I'm just going to get a real quick quote out of a book that, like, her last book, which is a collection of essays called The Source of Self-Regard. The work of a, and I'm going to just quote this best I can from memory, "The work of an author is not a gift to mankind. It is, it is its necessity." And that's probably, I probably just missed a word or so there, but it is absolute, it is an absolute necessity, you know, what they, you know, what they do. I do want to mention that this evening, we, the Lorraine Public Library, the main branch on Sixth Street in Lorraine is having a remembrance evening from six-thirty to seven-thirty. People can come and share their, you know, they have memories of Toni, which many people do, their memories of her, her family. We, you know, if you just want to come and listen, you can. If you just want, you know, read your favorite, you know, say, you know, quote or saying, or just, just like I said, just come on in and listen to what, you know, what we have, while we will have refreshments. And again, thank you. It will be held, of course, in the Toni Morrison reading room, and thank you again.
Thank you, Sheri.
I know that we're working on an official recognition of Toni Morrison and her birthday here in Lorraine County. And that's something we'll be taking up next week. I know we've invited the, the library, I believe, to come out for that as well, too. So, we'll do that officially next week. I just wanted that for clarification.
Thank you.
Thanks for all that you do. Anyone else wishing to address the board this morning? Seeing no one.
Mr. Cordez.
Yield to counsel. Thank you.
Mr. Ennis.
Commissioners, I do have three matters of pending litigation to discuss with you in executive session. And I also would like to personally extend my thanks and gratitude to Don and Matt and Chip and your host staffs. I'm not sure the general public appreciates what an incredible accomplishment these kinds of things are. I mean, when you think about the number of people they're going to impact, the years and years and years they're going to impact people, and the degree of difficulty, which was extreme. You, you guys hit this with tens across the board. And, you know, we don't give you a gold medal, but for the rest of your lives, when you folks go by that area and think about that area, you're going to know you did that. And you should, you should be proud of it the whole rest of your lives. And I really thank you sincerely for that. And I don't know, maybe we can, you know, libraries name rooms after people. Maybe we can, when we plant trees, we can name tree grows after these folks. And I do.
No more tree naming stuff.
I do hope, I do hope the media.
Maybe a rock at the bottom of the ditch.
I do hope the media publicizes it, because people just, you know, and Chip, you've got stuff all over the, I mean, I get out to eat and with the preservation. And it, it, these are just incredible, tremendous accomplishments.
It has a massive impact.
Thank you guys very much.
Well said, Jerry.
Yes.
Commissioner's report. First, I'd like for the clerk to advertise for notice of a public hearing for August twenty-eighth. It will be at our regular board meeting at ten AM to talk about increase in dog license fees and fees of adoptions and redemptions and just any kind of fees that goes along with the dog kennel.
I'll second that.
Mr. Skoski.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Sveda.
Aye.
I just wanted my condolences to go out to the Kukowski family. They lost Larry in February and they just lost Byron, so two brothers within a short amount of time. So, it's very sad for, for the entire family. So, I was dealing with that a lot, and also my goal that I was so graciously shared with Sheri.
Yeah, don't give it to me, guys.
Terrible weekend.
Don't give it to me.
So, we did a ton last night, which is on Clinton Avenue, and I meant to ask Jeff Barnes if he's seen any impact with flooding since.
I did their parking lot. I anticipated that parking lot was going to be soggy last night.
And it wasn't.
And it was a nice, dry parking lot.
So, the Lorraine Dems had a nice event there yesterday, so a really nice event. And Monday, we went to Allee Country Club for the Women's Power Up. It's a, actually, I didn't realize, it's a fundraiser for the college, Lorraine County Community College. Marshall Ballinger was there to welcome us all, and they also had golfing for the guys out. They had some, some pros out there giving advice, and it was, all of a sudden, I looked out, it looked awful foggy out there, and it was pouring down rain. So, I thought it didn't rain on a golf course, but actually, Monday, it did, so.
It did, and they were late getting in.
Yeah.
It was late getting in.
Because of the rain?
Well, the rain and, and if I can amplify, because it's a, I'm on the college foundation, and it's, it's a big fundraiser for us. We usually raise between ninety and a hundred thousand dollars a year for the scholarship fund. While I don't golf, because I'm so pathetically awkward that they asked me to leave, I do, I do what functions I can. And I was out there that evening. They couldn't put another golfer on the course. It was the biggest it's ever been.
Fifty or something?
Right. They, and they, they had every broken-down golf cart they could, they could push around the course. And it was a full, full slate, and of course, the rain delayed a lot of the play. They have that many golfers out, play was delayed to begin with. And then the rain delayed it even further, but it was, it was, it was the biggest it's ever been this year, and the sponsorships were the best. So, we.
I was told at the table that the women raised more money than the men do golfing, though. And it might be because of the, the don't, or, you know, the raffle baskets and the purses and all that.
Well, they were still, they were still going around with the jugs that night. I know that each time I had a cocktail, I lost more money out of my wallet to the raffle, fifty-fifties and so forth. But nobody takes the money, because whoever wins usually donates it right back.
Yeah.
But, but they, it's, that's, all goes back to our community for scholarships for the folks that go to, to Lorraine Community College. It's a gateway to a better life. It's a gateway to, to either a stepping stone to a different, different way of, different college. Some programming out there can be the start and the finish, depending on what you take. But all that money stays in our community to help, help our folks here, and that's the biggest fundraiser. There's other ones, but it all goes into the foundation for scholarships. So, appreciate you, you coming out there. And Matt, you came out in the evening. You knew how late they were coming back. I don't think you got to eat, they came back so late.
Yeah, I didn't know they got something in the evening.
They did. I, I was looking for you and Sharon. I knew you were at the afternoon events. The ladies' luncheon didn't seem appropriate for Matt. And he doesn't golf. He doesn't golf like myself, so I had him for the evening, and I, I was going to have you come out, but I didn't see you during the day. But Matt mixed out on everything.
Well, speaking of golf, Sheri and I will be golfing at Road to Hope's fundraiser on Saturday.
Saturday.
It's supposed to be hot again, like eighty-five degrees.
Of course it will.
So, I don't know.
But, but thanks for bringing it up. It's, it's an important, it's a very, very important function for the foundation.
I've been to it before, but I don't think I realized that's what it was, the money was going.
Right.
I think you've been there. Have you been to the ladies' luncheon before?
Yes. And I, but I didn't know that's what it was for.
The correlation, yeah.
For various reasons, I haven't been to that, but I do understand that it does raise quite a bit of, of funding itself.
Yeah.
Well, and I think, Jim, you know, they always bring up the statistics on how many graduates each year the college produces that are still first-time graduates, first-generation graduates in their families. And that, that number alone is so significant for impacting our county. So, and those kind of funds and programs help us to do that.
You know, a hand up is always important.
Yeah.
Well, as I always say, as a proud Lorraine County Community College graduate, if I hadn't started there, I probably wouldn't be sitting here with a degree today. And I think there's probably a lot of people in the county who can say that. I'm just always baffled by those who don't take advantage of the community college. It is just so cost-effective. It's a wise investment. The caliber of education is off the charts. And especially the university partnership. I don't know why anybody in the world would want to go away from school, away to school, and spend all that money when you can just save a lot of money and get a great quality education through the university partnership and.
Right here.
Yeah, right here. And, you know, heck, we're, we're one of the best community colleges in the nation, and we've been recognized with national awards. And had a chance to speak with President Ballinger the other day. Always just enjoy conversations with her. She is so enlightening, so full of energy. And, you know, talking about some new things that she's working on and the college is working on. And I just can't believe every time you have a conversation about the college, there's something new and better and improved that's going on there. And we are just so blessed to have a community college. I think there are people who don't realize, every county does not have its own community college. It's, it's truly, plays a critical role, especially getting people back to work, getting people retrained, getting people on course for good careers so they can, you know, buy a home, buy cars, support their families. And it's just a, a great way to go. But it was, yeah, it was a really, really nice event. But if the ladies decide to invite me to the luncheon some year, I'll go.
I don't think they would let you.
Okay.
Yeah. Dr. Ballinger did ask people to raise their hand, anybody that had gone to or graduated from the college.
The room fills up.
Ninety-five percent of the people have gone there, and so it's, yeah, it's such a benefit.
Yeah. Also, I just wanted to point out, Ms. Shea, when you talked about the transit issue, as I've said before, this board has always taken that issue seriously. We put questions before the voters time and time again. The voters have time and time again said no. We'll keep trying. We haven't given up. We know it's important. I see it as a social justice issue. But since you had the opportunity to attend a public hearing with Senator Manning, I can't stress enough how the legislature has failed miserably when it comes to public transit. Budget cycle after budget cycle after budget cycle, we rank towards the bottom when it comes to states providing funding towards transit. It's miserable. I remember one time on the floor, I thought I was able to get another, was five million dollars towards public transit in Ohio. We had an arrangement worked out on another bill. That's the way you negotiate down there. And then they changed their mind. I couldn't even get an additional, you know, five, five million dollars that day. So, but it's, it's poorly funded. It's not a priority of legislators. That's where the issue begins, is down there in Columbus. If they did a better job of doing it like so many other states do, instead of us, you know, being ranked at the bottom of the list, nobody wants to be in the categories with the Mississippi's of the world and all those other places. And if that's your home state, I apologize. I'm not attacking you for being from Mississippi or some of those other states, but they just have a different way of conducting their business. And it is an economic development issue. It is a jobs issue. But the state has got to step up, and they consistently do not step up, cycle after cycle after cycle. So, please have the discussion with the people who have the votes. Nathan Manning's in the majority. Gail Manning is in the majority. Dick Stein is in the majority. They've got the votes, and they do whatever they want to do. If it's important enough to them, they get it done. So, that's where an important part of the discussion needs to be held, and I certainly appreciate and value and share your passion for, for transit. But as we talk about here all the time, it's a partnership issue. A partnership that needs to be better engaged by the state legislature. A partnership issue that needs to be better engaged by, you know, the residents of the community to really make it happen. You just can't put something in place that you don't have the resources to do. The luncheon on last Friday, the new teachers' luncheon, always enjoy attending that. I know, Sharon, you were there as well, too. And I just have so much respect for, for teachers. It's a, it's a very challenging profession. You know, teachers really step up, I think, even more nowadays, because unfortunately, we don't have the nuclear family in a lot of cases, and the teachers play a more critical role. But just to see the passion and the energy that they have for wanting to educate our children. I was talking with the superintendent of Avon Lake Schools. He told me, I think they had fifty-five new students coming in. And then I talked with the superintendent of North Ridgeville City Schools, which is home to Mr. Cordez and Mr. Ennis. Two hundred new students coming into your community. So, it's, it's amazing how the community there is just growing. It's now our third-largest city in, in Lorraine County.
You know, and you know what's going on in Columbia Township.
Right.
What's on the board, the push from the east to the west is not going to be denied. And so, we're, we're seeing quite a bit. We need to prepare for that.
Yeah, yeah, we're growing here in Lorraine County. It's another big reason why we're moving forward with this building department. We want to make sure things are done properly, consumers are protected, families are made safe with good quality building. Just wanted to congratulate all those involved with the Veterans Who Care Steak Fry. Wasn't able to make it there. Wasn't able to make it there on Sunday. Had some family things going on, but looked like that was a big success. And also congratulations Democratic Women for their picnic yesterday. I hadn't had an ear of corn all summer.
It was so good.
Oh, that corn was delicious yesterday, just really good. And, but that, that worked out really well. It was disappointing to read in the paper, there's still no action until after the start of the school year on House Bill seventy. You have to call your state reps, your state senators, especially those in the majority who I already stated, they have the votes. They put this House Bill seventy through in basically less than a day. So if they want to change it, they can change it. They've chosen not to, but we just need to restore local control so that residents have local accountability in their community. And that completes my report.
And if I can speak to that, I know that I have an acquaintance who was an assistant principal in Lorain and I see that she has a new position in Oberlin. And I know that House Bill seventy and the lack of local control and the problematic situation in Lorain is costing them more teachers. And the problem will only worsen if we don't find some, some common ground and solution there. So last week I attended our litter prevention meeting. We're wrapping up the task force work on placement of all of the, excuse me, cigarette waste and trying to launch a public awareness campaign on the fact that litter from cigarette debris is litter. It, it doesn't decompose. It isn't good for our waterways. It isn't good for animals and pets. And we're going to be doing an awareness so that we can start seeing effective use of our, our receptacles once they're placed. They're going to be, they're going to be in place in areas that initially are adjacent to or near waterways and large gatherings. So that'll be rolling out shortly. The Lighthouse event at the Carnegie Center last week was a beautiful open house. If you have not been over to walk through the Lorain Historical Society Building, it's just beautiful what they did. They had state funding to construct a, excuse me, this cough, sorry. Excuse me, a beautiful wall that's a tribute to the heritage and the culture of the, essentially the blue collar work ethic of Lorain County. And they have murals from the U.S. Steel gateways when, when the fellows would leave work, as well as a mural from the shipyard. And a lot of local folks have, have family who are in those murals. So take time to stop by and see, it's, it's just a beautiful presentation. The new teacher luncheon was great and I do want to add that Kathy Leinbach had some very good words on advice on how to create environments of appreciation and how folks really respond to appreciation in different fashions. And she kind of coached the teachers on it as well as the supervisory staffs on how to create good environments of appreciation for both the children and the adults. Corn Fest took place this weekend. I was out there on, thinking it was Saturday night, as well as in their parade on Sunday afternoon. They had a shortened route. It was a very nice route. It was well-attended and compact because of all of the road, road construction, but they found ways to park people, move people and to facilitate both the fair and the parade. Saturday evening, I was able to attend the Ladies Night Out. It, it is a fundraiser for cancer and the theme this year was the Kentucky Derby. So there were a lot of hats and fanfare and dresses and purse bingo. I'm usually not a winner and that held true that evening. Saturday morning, we had Ray Carey on, the new incoming councilman for the South Lorain Ward, conducted a South Lorain cleanup and we had, Keith, how many volunteers? About a hundred volunteers. It was well-attended. Between eight and noon, we had multiple yards cleans up, cleanups. They had a dumpster filled with a house where a lot of stuff had been just packed into it and packed in the yard. They filled an entire dumpster. Keith and I were counting, how many yards did I mow?
Oh, I think you said around five or six.
Five or six yards I mowed. We had people following with weed whackers. I had a riding mower, so that made a difference. We had parking lots that we.
You didn't need to tell them that.
Yeah, I know, I should have took credit.
I was surprised until you said that.
So whipping around, they walked down the sidewalk, I rode, but we, no, we got a lot of work done. Lot of, lot of garbage bags were picked up, lot of refuge, lot of weeds were cleaned up. Everybody felt good about it. There was a lot of food donated and afterward we had, it was hard to work afternoon, once you could smell the hot dogs on the grill and, and you knew that, that the lunch was there, but they do, are scheduling another one, I think, for September eighth and I'm hoping we see even more volunteers. All the tools were there. Our cab vehicle was there, so we had supplies for everybody. Just a feel-good morning and, and lot, lot of work was done. So that was great and I thank everybody who showed up. They were scraping the old mural, they're going to be, I did volunteer. I wanted to paint the new mural, but they kind of poo-pooed that. I don't get to paint the new mural, so.
They poo-pooed that?
Yeah, they did. No, you don't get to paint. So also there was the St. Francis Festival that evening. The Veterans Who Care Steak Fry at St. Lads was well-attended, lots of baskets. I think they probably had a good, good amount of money raised that evening because they had a lot of stuff going on and, and it was well-attended and the steaks were great. The ladies' power-up luncheon was, was fun. Okay. And so from that discussion and that suggestion, I'm going to meet with, with that individual and a couple others on how we might orchestrate some young adult sessions or community sessions on weekends or evenings where they can hear things that are going on. Because at that breakfast, Judge Glass was there talking about exactly the functions of domestic court and people, it was eye-opening as to how many things they are, their jurisdiction covers. And so we'd like to bring that to folks who maybe can't attend in the daytimes and offer opportunities to learn more about city and county government. The last thing, I do want to have a shout-out, Claire, I, I think you're probably responsible for a lot of it. The new merge board, if you haven't heard, they've been doing a lot of anti-stigma radio campaigning and the ads are wonderful. The commercials are in high frequency so that you do catch on that they're, they're being run. And I think that it's an awareness that we were, we were hoping would, would occur and, and you're coming out of the gate really strong and I appreciate what you're doing. They sound wonderful. Keep up the good work. Also, I know that the new merge board had their retreat on Saturday and I've heard a lot of good feedback about that, going over some basics as well as just getting to meet and know each other and become a cohesive unit. And finally, oh, finally, last Wednesday evening, I did have a transportation meeting and to echo what Commissioner Lundie has said, you know, we're working with small groups on grants. We're working on small amounts of money. We're piecing together pieces of, of opportunities to attempt to create transportation. We met with the Paradox Prize Group, Sharon Pearson, Tony Gallo, Jack Bradley, myself, we were there. And their representative from the Paradox Prize Group was there as well. I know that Mayor Holly Brenda met with them earlier. And we're looking for opportunities, that particular grant money is designed to effectuate, prove that there's an ongoing sustainability of whatever they will fund at this point. And the thrust of that is for work and employment, transportation. You have to have a goal and that's what the goal of that particular grant is. Unfortunately, trains aren't on the horizon because they don't facilitate local employment. Any of our local employers are not seeking train transit. But insofar as buses or other modes of transportation, those are the things that these small grant funding opportunities will present. Excuse me, and I know we'll be working together on those. Thank you.
We'll meet on Wednesday, the twenty-first, at nine thirty. Four correspondents.
I would move that the reading be waived.
I'll second.
Ms. Lundie.
Aye.
Skakowsky.
Aye.
Ms. Sweetin.
Aye.
Aye.
So you get those coughing, but you got to get out of the room, right? So. Seeing no other business coming for the board at this time, I would move that we go into executive session.
I'll second.
Ms. Lundie.
Aye.
Skakowsky.
Aye.
This has been a broadcast of the recent Lorain County Commissioners General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at nine thirty at the Administration Building, two-twenty-six Middle Avenue, fourth floor downtown Aliria. These are public meetings and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.loraincounty.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners page, then click on View Agenda for a printable copy of the agenda.